Good afternoon. Welcome back to this session of the Quispam sis 2025 Budget Deliberations. And we have Mr. Loje, Partner of Engineering and Works at the podium, who gave his presentation this morning. And now we have some questions from council.
Everybody's napping. Everybody's napping.
So if anyone has any questions, we're ready to roll. We're back online. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Loje. A couple of questions for lane markings. I know that we have somebody in the budget there. I do, shoot, I forget the gentleman's name that came to talk about just putting some markings in some of our current roadways without expanding them just to have either pedestrian or bikes. And the Vincent Road comes to mind for myself because it's the same width in the Rossay side as it is in the Quispam sis side. And we've got markings going up for ride sharing or person sharing, whatever, up to Quispam, then it stops. Would it be possible to at least continue that? I don't know if that's, I know it would cost money, but it's just a question.
Yeah, that's one of the things we talked about with our AT plan is how do we take existing streets and decide to make them bicycle accessible. They are essentially bicycle accessible. As was said when we talked, I think we've talked about a few times, we can do that. What it does is it changes the width of the lanes that you have to use to drive. There's two good sides to it. It can slow down traffic. And then the trade off is same discussion that we had with the Model Farm Road, the Mian Skova, is how narrow do we want a bike lane to be to give that safe area to do? You'll see, I think, a lot of Rossays are under width from TAC to get those in place. And we had said that before, we can do that again. For us, it's a case of putting in lanes that we feel are safe to use. People are using it now. And those may be easy wins, like a low hanging fruit, that we can do it. But when the time comes that we, time to upgrade the Vincent, then we go to a proper width. And I think it goes to probably Counselor Lux's point about having a network to nowhere. It's one thing to say, okay, all right, the Cubplex is our destination. Now, how do we get everybody there? This is that missing link. How do we get that? And that's one of the, again, it's like your drinking game. It's one of those studies, whether it's internal or external, of what parts of the network do we want to build or accommodate now? And that's one of the things that our planning group, along with the AT group, is looking at after the transportation and Recreation Master Plan. If Council recall, last year, we put money in the budget for Bicycle Network Study with Green Infrastructure Canada. We put $50,000 in the budget. And we're waiting to have matching funds from Infrastructure Canada. They didn't open up that fund last year. So that $50,000 is still sitting in our, in our, set aside, the treasurer set it aside. And that was the intent was, we had hoped in '24, the feds would open their green fund for infrastructure planning, and we would actually have a network analysis to say, okay, here's your short term wins. Open up Vincent Road, do this in the interim, link it all the way to the Cubplex, find those nodes that you wanted to and do that. And that didn't come to fruition. So with everything else that we were doing in the town, that was one of the ones that just didn't get done. We have the cash there to see if it opens it up again, if it is a direction that, you know, the AT group and we want to proceed. You know, we can probably do a small scale study, I guess, with the cash that we had. We were hoping to leverage some federal money to do a bigger community wide phasing study, but it can't be done, yes.
The second question I had, because we're doing Ambassador and all the corner streets there too. But if you go down to Cambridge, especially when it touches the Quispam sis road, it's quite bad. I'm just wondering why that wouldn't have been kind of included in that area, because going straight down.
Yeah, that one, we're, just to sort of carry on what we just were talking about, we wanted to take it from the top of the Quispam sis hill all the way through to Grasmere in Greensboro and do a proper, because that is a street that should have, you know, that proper width and the whole bit to do it. So that's why we, excuse me, sat on that one.
Okay. And the last one for now is regarding Cedar Ridge Boulevard. But for everything that we're doing next year, there's no sidewalks. So I'm wondering if we're doing Cedar Ridge, if it's not room for a sidewalk, because it's already got the delineation in the middle with all the trees, would those roads at least be wide enough that there be a walking space?
That's the eternal question. I'm sure Counselor Olson has been here and some, and Counselor Thompson, if she was here, had been here long enough. The median and Cedar Ridge were the holy grails of neighborhoods that we tried to go in there and we would be land based if we cut a tree, if we moved it, if we did anything. That was their sanctity. We had talked, we've talked, you know, Director of Community Services and I have talked as well about, should we take that middle thing out and put a, widen the whole thing to have a proper active trail through the whole street? And at right, at this stage of the game, that would be a real community engagement exercise as opposed to, I would not want to put council through that exercise of arbitrarily, unilaterally deciding, we're going to cut down all the trees in Cedar Ridge and say, we're going to put a walking lane through there. That's, but it is one of the high value ways to do this. The other consideration is, in preparing this particular budget for street paving and water main construction, is, as I talked a little bit about earlier, when we take the center strip out, that's raw land. There's nothing underneath it. So all of a sudden now, we're rebuilding a full street structure, sub base, base asphalt. So now your costs go through the roof exponentially, because now you're taking that middle stretch out and you have to build a road on it. So now you say, okay, do you take that out and shift the road over, make it lane on one side? Do you take that out, put the lane in the middle? You still have to get people from the sides to the middle. There's all those conflicts that you want to address. So I would really think that it would be a community engagement exercise to say, okay, how do we want to see AT introduced into this particular subdivision? Because as I said, anytime that we've gone in there, even to cut dead trees, for whatever, they don't want to see the neighbor across the middle of the street. They want the trees there and that's it. So we took the most cost realistic option at this stage of the game, knowing that if council in the future wanted to introduce some type of active transportation to that network, it's a cost that you're going to have to have anyway. You'd have to take out the center median and you shift your lanes over or put the walking, it's still a, we're not losing, we're not front end losing cost money, because anything we do in there is going to involve new construction of that median. Cedar Ridge, when you come up, Clarewood Drive, that changes into Cedar Ridge Boulevard, the sidewalk at Clarewood stops up at the, just at the, but it doesn't go all the way into Cedar Ridge, because it introduces that median. So that's why it stops there, because the median is there. So, and like I said, it's, I'll say great minds think alike, but you know, Director of Community Services and I were just this past week, on Tuesday, we were talking about the same thing. We were going through our presentations. And she said, what would we do? What do we, I said, you know, all depends. How engaged do we want, how engaged do we want the community to be on this process?
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Maybe a monorail.
Monorail. It is amazing. And I'm sure a few council members have traveled through Europe. Public transportation is the ultimate, yeah. We can aspire, here, we just don't have the density, but monorail is a rail line or public, you know, is something, I would love to say in some form or fashion, you see, to take the Southwest rail line and go from Sussex to Wellsward and just put a commuter line on that goes four trains back and forth. And you'd eliminate everything. You know, there's some cities, Kansas City, they've got their main lines. It's a free line that goes from one end of the main street to the other. It just goes back and forth. There's just free hop on, hop off. But, yes.
I just had a couple of questions. And I appreciate there's a lot in this budget. And again, I commend you. And I see the, I see the management component, management budget, you know, maintenance, excuse me, component existing here. So I appreciate that sentiment as we've been talking about that, is an important value in our budgeting for this year. The two questions that I had were about, you mentioned on the second page about environmental development, your second bullet point says EDS engaged in meeting with developers inquiring about commercial. Addresses the lack of available commercially zoned lands to support the business and commercial development goals of the strategic and municipal plans. And then the second bullet says this is essential to continuing to build the commercial and business tax base to support the residential growth of the community. So, to the degree that, does that have any linkage as well to the sort of streamlining of the permitting process and so on and so forth? I'm wondering if there's any connection there, or if it's just a flat out, like, we just have no idea where we will even build here if we wanted to come and build.
No, this was in the context of what our environmental development staff is currently doing. So as I mentioned, Jennifer was in speaking to the person from, I don't know, Senegal, but from Europe about inquiries about commercial opportunities. And we're not the same as a lot of other communities that they own their industrial park. Millennium Drive is privately owned. We have some properties that we do. For us, it's more a case of if somebody comes in and says, the Solos property across the street, it's 10 acres, I want to put in a commercial development. Our development staff is saying, okay, it's, you may want to put a commercial there, but it's currently zoned, multi residential. And bring them to the appropriate direction or appropriate location. Or, as I touched on a little earlier, saying, yeah, you know, this might be a regional, you should be talking to Envision, those types of things. But those are inquiries that they get all the time. Even something as simple as mom and pop businesses that want to go in the mall, they're, will be the first point of contact to say, is there an opportunity if I want to open a driving range, indoor driving range? Oh yeah, Big Rock Plaza has some vacant spots out there. Try that. So that's what, when we were talking about engage in meeting with developers, inquiring, that's what the engineering staff and planning staff primarily will do, is do that. The permitting process is once they've got a place and once they want to build and whatever, that's where the streamlining comes in. But there's still significant amount of back and forth between our development officer, our planning technicians, even our GIS clerks about, are there waters there? Is there sewer there? Is it zoned appropriate?
Right.
That's the type of items I was talking about.
And I know that that zoning, rather that permitting and zoning sort of streamlining is, it's kind of here, there and everywhere. It's in municipalities all over the place. Everybody seems to be looking for ways to incentivize developers. And that was one of the reasons that we're looking at that, right? Is a way to kind of make it easier for developers to be, sort of be attracted more to our community and stuff. Do you feel like that's, would you say that that's going okay, going well? I spoke with a developer who was kind of like, his thought was that we're doing, he thinks it's better than it was in Quispam sis, but he thought that we had a bit of, we're a little slower, a little more red tape still than some other communities, but.
What we're seeing is that as well intentioned as a lot of applicants are, they see red tape as, cutting the red tape as, oh, just do it.
Right.
What we see is the process is, well, you bring us an appropriate plan, we'll just do it.
Right, right.
And so what they think, they're coming in with a fully, oh, this is ready to go. This is shovel ready. And we'll go, do you have a traffic study? No. Have you done a stormwater study? Well, no. Okay. Do you have fire? Do you need fire flow? Because we need water. Oh, really? So, but those aren't things that we give to them. They have to come to us with it. So the streamlining process is very effective for the residential construction, the paperless process, those types of things. What we're seeing is those commercial, those entities, even subdivision developers saying, I've developed in the town all kinds of time. You should just let me go. Just, I'm good for it. Okay, are you good for it if you don't pave the street in a timely fashion and we have to cash your bond and pave it for the residents? Or there's history saying, yeah, you may think you're good for it, but these are all the complaints we've had about your particular development. So that's the red tape. Those are legitimately, quite frankly, you know, what I've seen. And when you talk about people say, oh, it's slow, whatever. I've had complaints from developers. They'll come in and say, this is blah, blah, blah. And I'll go, okay, did you do this? And I go, well, no.
Yeah.
So it's an awareness for some of the developers. They think it's just, oh, I'll go to the town and it'll get done. That's not red, that's not cutting red tape, just letting people do stuff. That's not cutting.
No, no, certainly not. Okay, the other question I had was regarding the finalizing subdivision specifications and guidelines document and the subdivision bylaw changes. And I just wondered if you could educate me a bit on what is, what is changing there in relation to subdivision bylaw?
We, the housing needs that we've done and the density examinations that we've done. So when it comes to subdividing a lot, as soon as you introduce water to a subdivision, now you have the capacity, the ability to shrink down a lot size. So what we're doing is saying, as our infrastructure grows, can we adjust some of the dimensions in our lots? If we say yes, now it's a case of, should we change the bylaw? Or do we take that individual, make them go to planning advisory and ask for variance? So as soon as you get a multitude of variances, it's no longer efficient. Now you should say, well, if everybody's asking for a lot that's 100 by 100, and we can do it, why don't we just put it in, ingrain it in the bylaw?
Right.
And then they don't have to go to PAC. They just, they can do it. So those are the types of things that we're looking at. If there's changes in density, council, I think you recall, they were talking about parking for multi residential buildings. Okay, should it be 1.25? It should be 1.5. If our philosophy changes as a community and we say, we're going to, we're going to put more sidewalks in, we're going to introduce public transit or active transportation, yes, we don't, we don't get heartburn by going to a 1.1, 1.0 parking lot per unit type of, and that's not in the bylaw. So those are the types of changes that we're updating all the time.
Does the subdivision bylaw imagine a multi-unit development occurring within a subdivision? I think back to Dylan showing us the visual back when we were looking at the municipal plan updates and the open house events. And there was that one sort of, here's a concept of a subdivision that has some neighborhood commercial built in and some, even some multi-unit sort of, you know, like a three story building or something like that. Does the subdivision bylaw imagine anything like that, like literally in the language?
The zoning bylaw imagines it.
It does, yeah.
With, when we, remember, we were talking about integrated development zones, which is a combination of the different types of zones. So then it'll say, if you want to put a single family unit, then you go to the subdivision bylaw that says it has to be a lot this size. If you want to do, you know, then you, so, so that's, it's the overriding, it's the municipal plan document, your zoning documents, your subdivision documents.
I got you.
And so the subdivision bylaw itself doesn't, but it's a component of exactly what you're talking about, an integrated development approach.
I did have a question about water expansion in relation to where you captured about Cedar Ridge. But perhaps we'll wait till we get down to the five year.
The utility side?
Yeah, we'll wait till we get to that. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have a couple of questions to Mr. Loje. First is the salaries, summer slash admin. It's going up 290,000?
Yes.
So is that with the extra, what accounts for that 290, besides the increase for the summer students?
Oh, there would be, that's a division of all of the people involved. So there's Krista and her staff, over time, what they do is they reallocate everybody's salaries and assign it to a particular budget. So it's not assigned to a particular class, like it's not, because all we add at one person. It's usually, say, for example, my salary is 50% directed at works, 25% at utility, 25%. So it's a more, and re-envisioning of, okay, how are some of these salaries divided? If we take a particular individual and pull them out of planning and sign them all over to engineering or vice versa, then that allocation has to change. Yes, there's going to be some incremental increases when it comes to summer salaries for the union collective agreement. And that's reflected there as well. So you'll see, you know, the two full time labors, the mechanic, and then the union collective agreement will come in there as well. So it's not assigned to one specific type of group.
Just so everybody knows, I was looking on page 21, it said 107% increase. I thought, oh.
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's, that was my discussions with Ian there yesterday about, and Krista yesterday, so, okay, I can go through my, all my budget line items. about and Krista yesterday is, okay, I can go through my, all my budget line items and I've got, you know, 1,000 here, 2,000 there, but across the board, it's all salary adjustments that you'll see. And, and, and we are a service-based, salary-based organization.
Just going back a couple of years, I remember you did a change in the light bulbs that we use for streetlights. And there was quite a, a lot of talk about significant savings going to these new streetlights. And so, but now we're seeing an increase for streetlights. Is that because of more roads or is that because we didn't continue the pilot project?
13, 14% power hikes from energy.
It's just strictly rate hike?
We've, we've maintained the same amount of replacement and new subdivisions that we carry, usually in that 12 new, new lights a year. But the bulk of the cost is, is what Leah and Kristin and people tell me is strictly energy costs from the ground operation.
When we did that pilot program and we put it, put in all the extra money for these LED lights?
Well, the, the LED conversions was strictly from NV Power. They did that on their own. So we didn't, that was not an investment on our part. So what we, what we have invested in specifically has been some solar lights that we've put in Cedar Ridge and, and on Ridgewood Park off the Vincent Road because we couldn't access them, the power lines were not, didn't have any easements. So those are the types of investments that we made in solar lighting as a trial. But as far as the, the line item, that's all electrical cost.
And along the lines of Counselor Bigger about the zoning, I know there's a lot of chatter of allowing fourplex zoning or fourplexes going up in residential areas. Is that any, any conversations happening?
Well, our municipal plan allows for multifamily residential, certain lots are pre-designated based on the size. And, and if those of you may remember the last couple of years when we did our municipal plan, it was they did the study of certain areas where there's large lots that could accommodate those types of multi, multi-unit developments. So those were, have been pre-designated, but it still requires those applicants to come before the town to, to make sure that it follows within the particular area or zone that's, that is there. So there's no, as per se blanket, they just come in, some, some of it's pre-zoned, they can come in with just for a billing permit and they meet the, you know, the terms and conditions. But most of them still will require some approach to our, our environment development group, as planning advisory to council. But it is in their bylaws for those types of housing units, those dense, that level of density.
And if you would, my last question, it has to do with the traffic calming. And I, I know I've had this conversation with you before about collector roads.
Yes.
And that you don't allow, the town doesn't allow traffic calming on collector roads or is that from somewhere else that that's, that's instituted from traffic New Brunswick or something that we can't? Because the traffic, the, the collector roads, like that's where we're seeing huge, like up the Hampton Road and up the Model Farm Road and the Godola Point Road, that's the Penningale Road, like those are huge traffic problems. And if we can't put a traffic calming on the collector road, then we might as well throw our hands up. We have nothing to do.
Traffic, traffic calming is, is a, is a really complex approach. And, and the town, what we're looking at is, is those local subdivision streets that we could control where you want to have free-flowing, controlled, slow movement. It's easier to put the traffic calming in than on a main road. A main road like the Hampton Road, Penningale, those are people are expected to have high levels of service. They're expected to be able to drive without interruption, without, you know, those types of things. Quite frankly, if council says to, to, to staff, we want, you know, the town to be, you know, whatever, zero, zero enforcement, zero, zero, zero levels of infractions on speeding, you want to make sure that you want to say the Hampton Road is going to be, nobody's ever going to be able to ever be able to drive 50 kilometers an hour or higher. That's going to involve physical measures, narrowings, speed humps, islands, those types of things. Now the trade-off is, okay, that's the way the fire truck gets to your house. Now your fire truck says, okay, I, I can't drive on the Hampton Road at 60 kilometers an hour or 50, they're supposed to follow the speed limit, 50 kilometers an hour. So it's going, instead of a four-minute response, I've got an eight-minute response. Or the, what we, you know, what we hear a lot is, is I'm okay, once I get out of my subdivision, I'm on Vincent, Penningale, whatever, I'll drive and that's why I don't expect see delays. Within my subdivision, that's where we hear the most complaints. So now it's for us, it's a case of, okay, where's our, where are our resources best spent? And that is, okay, first inside the subdivision, enforcement and, and education. Then if we get to physical measures, those are a cost implication. But for us to actively go to all the main roads and it would be a significant cost of, of investment for traffic calming on the main roads. We're, we're hoping that some level of active transportation will encourage some speed reduction. If you look at what we've done on the Model Farm and Mansfield Road with the double AT lanes, visually, if there's no bicycles on those roads, somebody sees a highway and they're going to drive it as fast as they want. But as soon as you, you build it and they will come, if there's people walking or biking on it, the thought process and they slow down, which is the whole concept of active transportation. You want to be sure that you're incorporating the, those, those visual clues to your motorists. So that's the trade-off we have. Here we've got sidewalks off of the main road, people are walking, biking on sidewalks. So you've built the main roads for that purpose to move, move traffic. We are a car-based, car-centric community because everybody works in the city or outside. If it was more dense and more populated so that people lived, worked, played in the community, we could, we could actively reduce traffic on a lot of speeds on a lot of streets by those physical measures. But we're not at that state now. It's a philosophical approach.
Once they get to the main roads, then they really go.
And that's where, and that's where Chief Cordo and his crew have said to us, you let us handle those ones. And, and, you know, God love them, they do the best they can. And, and they come to, I'm sure their budget has additional traffic requests in this particular budget. And that's the same thing they tell to us.
But it's not, I guess my question is, it's not that we can't, not cannot put traffic, we could if we wanted to.
If council wants to introduce traffic calming on the Vincent Road and Hampton Road, you know, okay, it's, it's money that we can spend and I, there's people have said it'll be somebody else's problem, but there will be a lot of.
The Hampton Road belongs to the province, that's not.
Yeah, and they have to prove, they have to prove our, they have to prove our anti-traffic changes that we make to it. Speed, the whole bit. Look at the school zones that the province downloaded to us that is 30 in front of the school on Hampton Road. You think people are going 30 through there? I do. I drive a cresset vehicle, I do. And you've got the reminders that flash. But you're right, people, if they don't see anybody, I never see a kid here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Counselor Luck, please.
I thank you, Your Worship. I have a few questions. I'm going to change my, my arrangement because I actually want to build off what Counselor, Deputy Mayor Schreier had said. And I do think in terms of the collector roads, you know, looking kind of a little bit more upstream is I think a lot of complaints are coming from about speeding because we don't have safe infrastructure to walk or to bike. So it's scary when someone is driving 60, 70 on a 50 because you don't even feel safe, you know, walking on the shoulder. So I think as we move forward with active transportation and adding those shoulders, hopefully that will help a little bit, fingers crossed.
It's, it's like, like on the, on the big roads. If they, if, as soon as people start to use it, that's that clue. And, and it's, you can go anyplace and you take somebody off of the street, put them on sidewalk, now the cars think, well, it's free for all for the street, for the cars. And that's, you're right. It's, you have to see that, you have to see those structures, you have to physically be able to interact and that's the only way to do it. And eventually that's where we're, we're looking to incorporate to all of our street upgrades, those types of clues, visual clues for the motorists.
So you did mention that the triangle has been inverted and we are starting to see a more of a person-centric approach to transportation where we're looking at active transportation and people walking. So I'm really happy to hear that. Just a few questions I have in that regard. Just looking kind of ahead, you know, in the 2026 to 2029 kind of street capital plans, it looks like, you know, because I've been hearing fabulous comments around the additions that we've made to active transportation on Mansfield Road, but of course, you know, you know, people want more. So it looks like next year it's in the works to up until Benel and then it disappears. It never shows up again. So is that an oversight or are we continuing? Because I, I know at one point it was phased in where we were planning on doing the entire connection to Model Farm.
No, that, that's, because it's a five-year plan, what we did with that is that we said, okay, if you will recall, we're, we are constrained on the design. So what we wanted to do was to say, okay, once we get to this point, step back, what's working, what's not working? Where should the, 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 the lane be? That's the good thing about paper plans is after third year, we, we adjust them because we can go back to, and they, they always change. So, so it's the street itself, there's a, there's a conceptual for all, for the full length. It's just a question of, okay, when do we introduce it? What, to what level do we introduce it? And we want to do is we step back and say, okay, now is this the year to introduce it? And honestly, for us, this five-year plan was very difficult to put together because if we had stuck to previous years where we said, okay, it's going to be around 2 million bucks, we'd have like four streets on this. So we took the, we took, we took five years of streets and brought some forward and spread the five years over the six. So now we, we didn't, if you look at, we didn't add any new streets to the five-year plan from last year's, we just moved it across. So it's not a function of being dropped off, it's just a case, just we don't have the, until we know, we don't have the cash to do it. So it's just, so when do we do it? This is really the question.
Right. I guess, I mean, the reason I ask is because as you've heard through even the discussions around community development is that, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure, bike park, you know, that we're investing in, but, you know, until some of those things in terms of the connector roads, because I just noticed that then we added, like, you know, instead of finishing one connector road, so now it has at least an AT space. It's like, is AT halfway and then you're on your own? And then now we're adding new AT stuff versus finishing one. So at least that way we can start kind of promoting it.
And that's the ever, ever asking question is, is what drives when this particular road is going to get done? And, and what, at this stage of the game with our five-year plan, what's driving when a phase happens is we go back and revisit the pavement conditions. So all of a sudden we could say, oh, we can do the next phase of the Model Farm Road, but I've got a street here that's 40 and we should do that. And this, so this can wait. So we're going to come here and do that. So that's why it's not forgetting something, it's something all of a sudden has risen to the point that it needs some attention. And, and if we're going to do it and we've committed to say, okay, we're going to introduce AT on that street, then we start there. So it's, it's more fiscally responsibly spending the capital funds that we have in an absence of a, a financial asset management protection. So, and, and the treasurer, her and I have spoken a few, a few times, is if we knew that in the 10-year timeframe, here's the levels of commitment from the, from the town, here's where we envision funding coming from. And so now we'd say, okay, this is a big year, well, this is what we'll do. Right now we're, we don't have a truly fiscal, long-range plan for the town. We go year to year, we're lucky if we go two years, everything after two years is just, we're just guessing. Because in two years' time, there's a new council that's going to be elected or maybe most of you will be here again. Good luck to you all, I'll miss you. But that's the, the quandary that we're, we're wrestling with without a long-term financial plan. We cannot long-term financially plan, we cannot long-term actively plan for infrastructure growth or changing or upgrades or whatever. That's, and that's the quandary that we find ourselves in for, for just things like that. Because if I took every single street, you know, and said, okay, this is where it should be, your, your street capital goes like this. So you've got to keep it here. And that's the problem, something gets dropped and then we adjust it.
Right. I guess I just would, would hate to see us in it like five years again because we do, you know, we, we talked about kind of forward thinking is having a bunch of roads that have a little bit of active transportation. So really there's no active transportation because it doesn't bring you anywhere versus at least completing the project so that eventually people start using it. Because I don't think we're going to see the people using it until it actually brings you somewhere.
Unless you go from node to node, as the traffic communicator says, you need a node to node, and how do you get from node to node?
Right.
Is it off-road, is it on-road? And, and that's, that's a combination of the Recreation Master Plan, the AT Plan, and what I spoke to Counselor Bigger a little bit about, or Counselor Miller about the Infrastructure Canada, the $50,000 for an AT implementation plan. Now we can say, okay, here's where we want to go. And it all goes back to, honestly, it goes back to, I don't know if I'm going to have money in three years to do this.
And then I have another question about, so thank you for that, is the $75,000 in the housing needs strategy? So you had mentioned that, I mean, I think it's fabulous that we are re-looking at, you know, rezoning and really looking at policy to support, you know, growth in our community. But you also had mentioned that really it's about interest rates, cost and capacity, right? I mean, we, we can only do what we can do because there's only so much capacity out there. I also noticed that, you know, we're basically mandated to provide Envision over $200,000 this year. And, you know, we've already invested in a housing strategy for the Housing Accelerator Fund, so we did do a needs assessment there. And then I've also noticed that Envision has on their website that they collect, they have a dashboard and they collect and share relevant data that supports strategy development and decision-making that will foster growth. So again, we're already investing quite a bit with Envision.
And, and I, and I should clarify, this is, we've done that, this is for the implementation of what we've already done. So these are the changes that, that, so we have our Howdy's Need Strategy that's been developed through Dylan and the resources that they have from those areas. But this is now implementing the, the components of that housing needs.
Okay, so that was, that was my question.
That's my, my apologies, I have to clarify.
Okay, so, yeah, so if.
It's not for the studies, for the implementation of the recommendations of that housing.
Okay, so can you expand a little bit more then on, yeah, the housing, because it's called a housing need strategy? So if, yeah, if you can just expand, because I was wondering about like, kind of how is the, like, yeah, because I guess I was assuming we were doing another study and I didn't know how that information was going to be used.
So, so the, the assessment was done, the needsing, the recommendations. So there, what they would say is, you should do to change this particular bylaw or you should introduce this process to Counselor Bigger's point about cutting the red tape. How do you, how do you envision this particular coming? So it's the implementation of the recommendations, whether there, whether there should be bylaw changes, whether there should be programs identified. So that's, it's how do we implement the recommendations? And that's what this is, is to find out, okay, what are we going to implement? How do we do that? And until the, the study is, it's not finalized yet. Not finalized yet? So, so once, once, so we wanted to have something in the budget. So when this, when the needs assessment report comes in, we can say, okay, now we can act on it. And we will want to make sure there's money in the budget to act on the recommendations.
Okay, so the 75,000 would be going towards, I guess I'm still, because most of the things you described would be staff time, like developing bylaws and stuff?
Some staff time, but, but it could be workshops, consultant fees, program, software, anything like that to implement the programs that they, they want us to do. And until we get the report, that's going to be, then we can come back to you and say, we put this money aside, we may not need all of it, but we wanted to have a figure. This is based on what Dylan's saying. If we, it looks like where we're going from your report, you should set aside this much money to implement what we're going to tell you to do.
Okay, thank you.
That is, Counselor? Counselor Olson, please.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Lojé, thanks for all the updates and that. Couple of questions. I was wondering, I was wondering that there's nothing in here for additional sidewalks in the town?
Yep.
And I know that it was quite a hit when those sidewalks were put in up by the Lakeville Elementary School. And I was just wondering what your plans were for additional sidewalks and what can we expect?
What we are doing is, in the past, what we've said is if there are areas close to schools where they introduce walkers, when we have a street upgrade, we will introduce sidewalks as part of that street upgrade. So in this particular program, we don't have any streets close to schools that would warrant So in this particular program, we don't have any streets close to schools that would warrant a sidewalk. So, so that's why, and, and again, it goes back to if I had more money to spend on sidewalks, I would, we would, could, could expand on it. But it goes as well to our asset management question of if we build more, then we have to maintain them. We have to do this whole bit. So what we've been doing is focusing on street surfaces where we can incorporate a wider shoulder, plow off of a shoulder instead of a particular sidewalk. Sidewalks have the undesirable effect of dividing, you know, like you said before, people up on sidewalks, all of a sudden they're safer, the cars go faster. So what we're judiciously looking at is where is the wise place to put in a curb and drainage system and a sidewalk behind that curb? Even the Millennium Drive, which, where it started out as curb and gutter sidewalk, we've asked them to revisit that and say, okay, no. What if we take just a walking, you know, a multi-use trail and pull it off behind the ditch? Now you don't have curb gutter, you have an existing storm sewer, but now you've got a wider surface. So it's, it may not be a sidewalk. So what we're doing is replacing traditional curb and gutter sidewalk with a widened shoulder. So we're using the monies that we may have spent on putting a sidewalk in, in, in actually widening the shoulder and accommodating, I say, a bike lane or something like that. So it's, it's, when we get to physical sidewalks, we will see them reintroduced close to the areas where schools are. So what we will see, it's that extra level of safety.
I know that when we put in the Southwood sidewalk, that was quite successful too.
Yes.
And the design, you know, separate to just.
Similar to what was on the Gondola, on the Gondola Boulevard, same thing. It's a separate, a separate walking lane. And, and that will, and again, it goes back to us leveraging federal money on the green strategy for network development, pedestrian network, which is, again, we will investigate that this year, but we just didn't come out last year.
I know, I know we talk a lot about water and that. And now we've got a proposal before us for review and aging in place on Solos property. Up in the Hampton Road. And I was wondering if anybody has thought about or investigated the possibility of extending the existing water now and entering into an agreement with that developer once everything's approved to eliminate the need to put in fifteen or twenty wells, individual wells? And whether that, that agreement could compensate for that more, sort of inefficient way of getting water there when there's a matter of time and we're going to have water there.
Sure. And there's two, two components to that discussion that we've had with developers. One is some, there's an initial cost to that. And if we say, well, to tell you what developers, if you put in the water line, we'll reimburse you. They'll go, I don't want to spend my money for you, you know, it was brought up, you know, that's cut about efficiencies. That's why developers are looking to minimize their cost. So they push it back to the municipalities. So we don't have the, the capital to say, okay, we're going to put in a water line with no users. And, and so it's going to be planned appropriately. So why we are leveraging things like the housing accelerator fund to get some of that infrastructure in place. So, so that's one component. But if we say to them, tell you what, build your house now, or your, your multi-unit now, and it's not going to be finished in two years anyway, and we'll have water in two years. I can't guarantee it. They can't guarantee, nobody can guarantee that the water lines will be there in two years. So they, they are a little skittish about saying, oh, yeah, no problem. All of a sudden they're finished their building, they're, where's your water line? Oh, we never got government funding. Okay. Well, now they got to drill the well. So, so it's a little bit of realistic approach on, on either side. And it all, it really boils down to who's willing to put the cash upfront when you get right down to it. And, and again, Dwight's.
I didn't realize there was a placeholder over there for me. If I can go back through your worship, if I can just take a moment, if I can go back to councillor Lux ask about the seventy-five thousand dollars to answer Mr. Olson's question, tied the two of them together. Part of the problem that we have and one of the recommendations is coming through the housing needs assessment. When that comes to council, once the budget process is all done and put to bed, there's a workshop that's happening with council to go through that housing needs assessment, to identify the recommendations, to educate, to say, this is where we need to move forward. Part of the problem that we have is we don't have policies in place. We've applied for housing accelerator fund. The CMHC is focused on housing. They're not going to give you straight money for infrastructure. Part of the problem is I can give you money for infrastructure, you can put a pipe in the ground. Ten years from now, it's still a pipe in the ground. There's no water flowing, there's no bedrooms connected to that housing, there's no toilets to flush. If they, if you say, I'm going to give you X number of dollars to put infrastructure in the ground in three years, there's a hundred and sixty units sitting on the end of the infrastructure. You're incentivizing development because you know there's housing that's happening. Part of our challenge is we don't have policies to guide that. A developer comes to the town and says, will you partner with us? Okay, what document do we have to go back to say, okay, if you're going to produce two hundred units, you get X number of dollars? If you produce twenty units, are we going to entertain the cost for twenty units? So from a, from a polit, from a staffing, council, community, decision-making process, we need guidelines, policies. That is something that's coming through this process. And part of that seventy-five thousand dollars is to actually develop those incentives, put them in policies, make application process that you can apply. Just recently, I'm pretty sure you've heard, you know, the city of St. John, there was an application period that was open. Developers had a certain period of time to make application to get incentivized funding per door or per whatever that the city would contribute to infrastructure and all those types of things. We don't have that. That is part of that seventy-five thousand dollars. If you were to say as council, can staff work on that? This is where it would sit on my desk. Day-to-day operations is simply too much to work on these important, important, important documents for the long-term planning of the community. So that's where that sort of ties it back together. If we had those policies in place, we would look at that. When they come and say, I want to build sixty units, can you extend the water line? We have a policy that we can go to and say, okay, at, at sixty units or X number of dollars, we're willing to contribute to assisting, right? That's allocated, it's a budget item that we can go to. Staff doesn't have that and we can refer to it right now. So, and to simply, and to simply say, okay, we're going to put a pipe in the ground. Again, is a pipe in the ground, ten years is still a pipe in the ground? Or if we had taken that money, given it to a developer, entered into an agreement and you're guaranteed, you're getting a return on investment. So that's the, the reason we're asking for that, that funding to help, to help bring these policies forward. I was going to say something else. It's lost. Was that? Maybe I was thinking two questions and I put them together. See how efficient that is? That's the way I like to work.
You were talking about the housing accelerator and water and seventy-five thousand dollars and.
Yeah. So that's, you know, that is, that is there. And again, on, on an individual case-by-case basis, if council wishes to go, you know, looking at, on a case-by-case basis. But the better approach is that you have a policy in place. Those discussions can happen with staff before they come to council and those such things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Councillor Olson, were you finished with your? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lozier. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you. Just one, one more question. Now I lost my spot here. It has to do with the paving or the, I know that the, under the sewage utility at Capitol is where we're going to see about the lift stations. However, in this, what we're doing right now, the street paving. So my question is, is when you come down the Quispamstis Road, you turn right towards the ferry? That is now completed. That lift station is completed. So would we not start thinking about paving that road instead of waiting till two thousand and twenty-eight or?
I will, I'll put it back because you, council will see this in, in, in the near future, in the new year. We still haven't decided the approach that we want to take with respect to the scenic route on the Gondola Point Road. That street design will, will dictate the type of street paving that we do. Whether we're putting in a sidewalk, whether we're putting in a, a, an active trail, the whole bit. If council will recall, we, we did our active transportation and our master transportation plan, brought it back forward as a scenic route option. Council sort of pulled back on it a little bit. We had some, so we didn't get a real good feel for that. So what we wanted to do was bring it back before you as an appropriately, that planned, identified process. So now that we can make that commitment to say, yes, the Gondola Point Road will be paved from the end of the Quispamstis Road to the beach. And we recognize now that the director of community services has a beautiful bathroom facility there. It's a destination and people are going to walk from the top of the Quispamstis Hill down the sidewalk. That's going to be by the cemetery, if we can get all the dead people out of the way, and walk all the way down to the beach. Now you've got that loop, you've got that network you're talking about. But it, but, but it's just similar to what, what Dwight was saying about a council direction on policy. We're not getting a warm and fuzzy feeling about that's what council wants to do. If council wants, if they don't want to do that, then it's, it's irrelevant. We'll just pave the Gondola Point Road. The last thing I want to do is just say, I'm going to go pave the Gondola Point Road. And I'll have councillor Lux come up to me and say, and you didn't put in a walking lane? Or a bike lane? So, so we want to give council a comprehensive plan to say, okay, is it going to be a walking lane? Is it going to be a scenic route? What is it going to be?
Okay. So just so I'm clear, the, the, the plan is to come back to us.
Yes, oh, definitely. The plan is to come back with a phased approach. Because we're also, in the utility department, we're talking about a pump station that may have a washroom. That was asked about by council, which is links to, rightfully so, some type of a walking trail or network through there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. Just one last quick question, since you brought it up, about policies related to incentivizing development and so on. I just wonder, does, would it be a matter of, of a policy subsection to, you know, like to build in a section on negotiating for, you know, X affordable units? I mean, I guess in one sense, if we're going to develop a policy from the ground up that doesn't exist for us currently, we could develop whatever we want. But I just wonder if that's something that is in the discussion at all? Or is that kind of outside of what would be standard in that regard?
Yeah. The thing that you're going to see with that is, is, and you, and you say the affordable housing, it's, it's establishing what is affordable.
That's right. Of course. Yeah.
And, and, and then.
Yeah. But there are matrices that are used to determine that community.
To Dwight's point about if, if staff has some direction, if we knew that council has a affordable housing fund that sits, whether it's in a reserve, whatever, it's a hundred grand, then, then that's all part of that incentivization. We, okay, now we know what we can do and it has, and, and like, like he says, is it sixty units? Twenty-five percent has to be affordable housing? You qualify. Boom. So it, but it goes back.
That's what I'm, that's essentially what I'm asking is like, do we imagine kind of building in? When somebody comes to us, that as a matter of course, we would begin at the very least from a starting point of saying, okay, well, you know, as part of this negotiation, we would ask that you consider this much for this long. Like, sometimes those are things they have, often those things have a, a sunset clause of five, 10 years. You know, a percentage off of X number of units within a development, that sort of thing.
As a community, when you set those incentives, you can set all the standards you want. Green Cities and UTRAC, they, they had incentive incentives. It was affordable housing, but it was also green infrastructure and connection to active transportation. Those types of, you know, passive, you know, solar. You can, you say, okay, you've got sixty units, yeah, twenty-five percent are affordable, yeah. Oh, and you've got green infrastructure? Oh, look at that, you qualify for XYZ. But we need those policies in place.
Thank you, councillor Lux, please.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to one of you. It was just actually very similar to what councillor Bigger was asking is, yeah, I'm guessing that we're not the only ones doing this. So in terms of starting from scratch versus looking at best practices, like are there ones that we're looking at now that are promising? It's just that, again, we still need the time and resources to, to do them. So.
Through you, your worship. So I'm going to go back to your previous question before this one. You referred to Envision St. John and us having to contribute to Envision St. John. And I think it's money well invested. Envision St. John is regional. So they look at what's happening as a region, what are the trends, demographics? They assist us and provide that information on a regional level. I think earlier you had asked if there were specific information, but at Quispamstis, no. But as a region, we can sort of give you some guidelines. So we would obviously work to see what's happening in the region. City of St. John, however, he has these, some of these policies in place, obviously on a larger, bigger scale. But we would be able to use those to refine, to flavor them to what we wanted. But also looking at, you know, as a region, where are we going? So we're not sort of the outlier, you know, sort of thing. So, yeah, that's, we would obviously look at what's happening as a region and look at also what's happening in the province. But we, we would not be starting from a clean slate. So.
I've, I've chatted with Dwight for a long time, he and I. And one thing we both learned at school is it's always better to steal it from somebody else, from, from the book, from, or look at the back of the book for answers or look at somebody else's report before you do your own report. Goes a long way.
Thank you. I'm just going to go to.
I still earned my degree appropriately. I didn't say, I plagiarized all my stuff.
C.L. Watson, please.
Over, thank you, your worship, through you. This conversation is music to my ears. I made passing reference in the stabilizing section about the value of policies and processes so that we can receive your strategic direction on what you want to have happen overall. And which gives then the, the, the power to the staff to enact what you would wish. So I guess the indulgence I'm asking for you here, and although I'm looking at councillor Miller, I'm thinking of all of you. And I say, that will cost a little bit of money to get that work done, to set that stage properly. So that, so that exactly, as, as Mr. Colburn mentioned, the, the policy environment is set that you're satisfied with, that we can then enact. So I look forward to that very much. I appreciate the indulgence.
Thank you very much. And I don't see any other questions.
Part two.
Part two.
So the back half, and as council has mentioned a little earlier, the utility and side is definitely a second and separate component of, of the, not just the, the operations, but also the financial approach when it takes to. So, so all of the water, sewer and treatment and, and collection issues are based on that, that whole premise that we have a user pay system, that we're looking at a totally different financing model. We're looking at totally different levels of debt, debt ratio that you can carry. We're looking at totally different approaches and, and methods to account. And we're also looking at totally different ways to generate revenue for these particular facilities. As you can see in the, in the, in the spreadsheets that you had in the presentations from, from our treasury department, and I just sort of copied it on, on the next slide here. Basically, you're looking at again, a, a maintenance, hold the line type of a budget. The operating costs, as we talked about a little earlier, are primarily being generated by, no pun intended, generation costs of the electricity. We've got a lot of electric heavy types of, of functions with the water and wastewater treatment facilities. And so that's where a lot of the costs are going to come into play. Provincially, there are regulations that are coming our way. The groundwater under direct influence, the GUDI, if anybody was wondering what a GUDI was. It's groundwater under the direct influence. They've identified we may be eligible for environmental trust fund, funding with some matching funds. So we've, we've carried forward that secondary GUDI investigation in the particular budget. The, what that does is it's well field protection. And again, if we choose to operate a water utility, we have to follow certain guidelines that the provinces established. And this is one of the things that are, that are thrust upon us is to make sure that we provide a supply of water that's not under the direct influence of surface waters or other contaminating factors. The cost to analyze samples, as we, each year, there are more and more contaminants that are being discovered. The province will require us to test for those particular samples. And so the costs associated with that will go up. We're fortunate, I'm sure a lot of you in your conferences and in the news, you've heard about PFAS, the forever chemicals. Those are those Teflon, plastic coated types of chemicals that live forever in the water and your bodies. We haven't been to that level of treatment yet. We're fortunate in the area of the country that we live in that we're not directly influenced by that. But I would expect in the near future, you will see provincial or federal regulation with regards to PFAS coming down the pipes. Pardon, again, another pun. We do have aging infrastructure, so you're going to see some of the, some of the pumping costs involve replacement of pumps. And that's part of that normal pump replacement cycle. With, with respect to the sewer department directly, really, we're looking at some savings at, just at the Forests Cove. We've, we've got a handle on the wetland facility down there that we've been able to find some efficiencies and post-treatment. The lift stations, again, as I mentioned earlier, the higher electrical costs are going to, what, are going to eat us in, from both the treatment and the pump stations, both. So really operationally, those are the main things that you're going to see. And, and from an administrative perspective, quite, you know, it's not going to be a lot of things that we can do unless we decide to change specific levels of service, different levels of, 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 of demand that we have for, for the residents. With respect to the utility department on the Capitol, there are three, four main areas. We've got a fleet replacement, where we're looking at a dedicated backhoe for the utility department. We're replacing a one dump, one-ton truck that again, has a sander unit. And to councillor, deputy mayor Schreier's question, this is a sander, salter unit that we use at all the lift stations in the lagoons and facilities to clear those areas off. So it's a year-round vehicle. But this is a one that we have identified as having a slide-in sander unit to extend the useful life of the dump body when it comes to corrosion. But it is at its, at its useful life and that's why it's on this particular list. The Gondola Point Road, Worshe Water Pumping Station, council prior to budget deliberations had asked about investigating a potential wa, public washroom as part of the building construction. So when we were preparing the budget, we basically just took a half a million dollars and set aside as a placeholder. We've had initial design meetings with our consultants. And they feel that structurally and operationally, we can, we can probably accommodate. And they feel that structurally and operationally, we can probably accommodate a public washroom for significantly less than that, probably in the hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollar range. Again, recognizing that the construction of a public facility, it's an occupancy level construction as opposed to an industrial level of construction. So you have to account for fire separation, things like that, separation from the electrical side. So it is something that we've asked our consultants, as they do the design, to incorporate. And as I said, they've come back to us and said it's not going to be as expensive as our placeholder. So right now, they're saying, you know, that's a line item that could be dropped to at least two hundred thousand dollars without any concern from that perspective. That's the one on the middle halfway through from the Gondola Point, on the Gondola Point Road, from the Vincent, from the Quispam's Hill to the Rossay Boundary. It's about the one about halfway through. It's got the big parking area that, and it goes down. So it's pump station number three. So it would be about halfway from the Rossay Boundary, or two, you know, a third of the way from Rossay Boundary to the beach. And I believe you had asked, you know, that would be a logical spot for a public access washroom. And we said, okay, let's incorporate that into the design. So again, so it can be a cost that can be adjusted appropriately. The Vincent Road pumps, it's a normal lifecycle replacement. These are high volume, high capacity chopper pumps that are shipped in from the US. Very expensive, and that's the normal capital replacement. I can't do this under operating, even though it's an operating process, it is a capital investment that we have to budget it as this particular way. And then finally, on Longwood, the treatment facility, we're looking at, as we introduce the net zero, the solar panels, as we introduce the treatment capacity down there, we're looking at some quality housekeeping and security issues. So we're looking at paving the access and improving some of the fence and gating of that particular lagoon area. The paving will take us from the Longwood Drive, past the tracks, down to the gates. And then the gate area will give us repairs to the existing gate and a second access point that we can use for maintenance and access. The fourth item, and it's, we'll take up the last of my three slides here, is, and it's been referred to a couple of times. And I apologize, this may be a, I'll say, whether it's a philosophical or strategic discussion, but it is a discussion that council should have nonetheless. So we're proposing three point five million dollars on the Millennium Drive system to extend the water through Cedar Ridge Boulevard. What that will do is we'll take the water from Millennium Drive, bring it out here to the Hampton Road, so that when the time comes, in two years' time, if we do are successful with the Housing Accelerator Fund, we will be able to tie in and tie the water system. What that does is it gives us a safe, secure, and good quality water loop. If you know water system design, it's all based on making sure that you've got a loop system. If something happens, you have a back source for it. And you also have the ability to not end up with a dead end where water quality, the water will degrade, so that sets at the point that you're wasting water by flushing it on a regular basis. So what we envision happening is that the phasing of this particular loop will coincide with the commencement of the Hampton Road in the following year. And we'll have a fully functioning and secure and good quality of water system for that particular area. Philosophically and strategically, council will now be sort of wrestling with the same thing that we've done in the past, but not to the same degree. We've talked about, okay, do we make people connect now? Do we force people to connect when the water goes by? Do we charge them a frontage fee? Those are the types of discussions that I'm sure that we recall, you know, in Rossay, the same discussions they had, and people were objecting to, you know, oh, I don't want to pay because I'm not using it. My well is good. Those are the types of things that strategically will need some direction from council if we choose to proceed with this particular project. The project itself will then, as I touched on a little earlier, marry back to the paving of the Cedar Ridge Boulevard. Cedar Ridge Boulevard has not been paved since its construction, initial construction, and you can see it in some of the stretches. And it's been dropped three years in a row now with the hope that we would be looking at water. We were all at council meeting a few weeks ago, and council were asked about their strategic priorities. And more than, more than half, if not all, of the members of council said water. Water, water was a priority. And it's one thing to say, water is a priority, but now it's a case of what, how do we, how do we go about enacting that priority? And if it's not a priority, then these types of projects will just go off the wayside. And we'll have to wait until there's a domestic or environmental emergency that we have to, we have to bring water into the play. So if we're going to say, all right, water is a priority, we want to enhance development, we want to change the opportunities. It just, it's, there's an engineering and a logical process to do this. And we can't say, oh, we just want to take water here because we just want the Hampton Road. All of a sudden, now, if you, if something happens partway up, all these projects down here that don't have a backup supply for your water are left high and dry, pardon, again, pardon the pun. This is why we're designing systems with loops, with redundancy, with that quality and supply control in mind. So you have to take a step. There has to be a step someplace, and where is that step going to be? And we're proposing that that step is next year with the Water Capital on the Cedar Ridge Boulevard. And it helps us with the paving and servicing of that particular area. The last two slides, and I will go to the first one. Really, CBCL did that study for us in 2019. They did the Downey's Water System, that Millennium Drive System. What is the potential expansion zone of those particular areas? And they projected, as you can see, the different phases are, you know, one, two, three, four, nine million dollars to put water into the town. And there's no way that we could say, all right, there's our twelve-year water investment plan right there, because you're looking at the better part of sixty million dollars. So now we have to sit down and strategically say, which ones do we want to do? If you look at the next slide, if we say water is a priority for the town as a whole, you're looking at a hundred and forty-one, a hundred and seventy-one million dollars for the town as a whole of the serviceable area that you're looking at, which is not realistic. If we had a hundred and seventy-one billion dollars, I'd be asking for a raise. Can I have a raise? Anyways, but the thing about it is, it is still a strategic question that council has to decide. It's all well and good to say, yes, water is a priority, and good on us for saying that, definitely. But now it's a case of saying, okay, but in what focus do we want it to be? Is it to encourage commercial development? Is it to encourage safety? Is it, what are we trying to encourage? If it's to encourage development, then we need to bring the water to an undeveloped area, knowing that we don't have a revenue source for it. Because nobody, as Dwight said, you can bring a pipe to an empty's lot, but nobody's going to pay for water on an empty lot. How do we offset those costs? Those are the types of strategic discussions that we have to have. And I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer at the budget meeting when we're all up and fun and having fun talking about road and water and sewer. But again, it frames our decisions as we go forward. Because for too long, as a community, we've pushed water down the road, literally, figuratively. We've said, ah, no, we've got good water. And we've had the information to back that up. We have, we've got a groundwater modeling, a hydrogeological model that says to us quite emphatically that, as a community, we can supply all of our homes on, in its current format, the, you know, the greater than half acre, the larger lots, with service with sewer, we can be a groundwater-based community without any fear. We have water quality and quantity to supply, to currently develop in the current fashion that we have. And we've made that choice to say, well, we can do that way. But what's happening, what we're seeing is that the changes are coming, that we want to offset the costs, as we say, now we need to intensify. We need to increase our development. We need to bring in commercial opportunities. They need high-volume water that cannot be serviced by putting another straw in the sponge, so to speak. If they want to invest in a cistern, redundant storage, pumps and things like that, yes, they could do it, the same way that they would get permission to pull a lot of water out, do it at night, and all of a sudden, they're sitting on a big tank of water and they spread it out over. But that's, that's an investment that they're making in their own infrastructure that developers don't want to do. They look to the community to say, well, if you want us to come, you give us the water. That's our strategic discussion that we have to have over the next little while. So for us, it's a case of, I wanted to frame the reason for bringing the three point five million, knowing that this is going to be the first step potentially for a lot of other similar discussions as we move forward. Particularly if we want to leverage things like a housing accelerator or designate a highway program. If council recalls the last memos, the last council meeting, there was a designate highway program update that went out. We added year thirty-one and thirty and thirty-one, which both included, if I'm not mistaken, water going on the Hampton Road out towards Elliott Road. If we're going to pave the street, should we not put water in the ground? Probably. Engineering, it makes sense. Could we delay it and say, we're going to do it in thirty-two and thirty-four? Sure. But we want to put it on the books now to be aware. Those are the costs that we're going to have to see in the future. So, so again, I don't mean to be that naysayer, the voice of, it's not doom and gloom. It's a voice of prosperity. It's a voice of opportunity if we choose to do that. It's a voice of saying, all right, we're going to be thinking far enough in advance that, yeah, if we have a reserve opportunity, let's put it in the reserve because we know we're going to spend X amount of money on roads or water. You're being, present you is looking out for future you, or future you and your kids, or future you and your friends and family. It's like finding twenty bucks in your winter coat. You know, I put my winter coat and I find twenty bucks, at least past me was looking out for future me. Now we have the opportunity to say, okay, now we're going to put twenty bucks in our winter coat. And we're going to take advantage of it. I know twenty bucks doesn't go for a, it does for me. That's in my allowance for a week. Anyways, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take everybody down. So I appreciate your patience and attention for the last however many hours. I will miss this if it comes to that stage, but it's part of the job. And it's inspiring to watch you folks work. It's inspiring to see, okay, you're making decisions for the community as a whole, and that's what makes this a great place to live.
Don't you sneak away yet. And just one question. I know when Deputy Mayor Schreier was talking about the wastewater management systems, what came to my mind was, when you mentioned the location up towards the Vincent Road, when we, and I guess at one point, Mr. Lozier, we did talk about beautification of the Gondola Point Road. Is that the ideal spot to invest in a washroom facility there? I don't know where people walk and bike. I mean, when I used to walk, it would be down on the other end, but I'm one person.
Sure. And what we're doing is we're leveraging existing infrastructure. We're leveraging security, well, possible for well drilling, electrical, SCADA. It is generally halfway. If the Director of Energy Services says, and our team say, well, listen, we can accomplish all this with a one nice big facility at the Gondola Point Beach. And then we say, okay, that's great. We, I'm sure we'll talk about, is the Gondola Point Beach, is it, is climate change? Is the water going to raise? Does it have to be up on stilts? Where's it going to be? Is the road higher? What's going to be more used? Is it part of this walking network? People won't even want to walk down there. So those types of discussions will be had. But it's more a case of leveraging economies of scale by, while you're building it. All it is, is you're putting an extra properly constructed rooms on the end of a building. Everything goes right into that. Now it's a case of, do you have a potable or non-potable source? If you went to a standalone and said, okay, we're going to put in the exact geometric metal of the lanes, now you've got all the stuff on its own, and you've already invested some stuff. So that's why we're looking at attaching it to existing infrastructure.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you very much, Mr. Lozier, for this section as well. I take your point, they're well made, your points are well made about the, sort of the heavy dose of realism related to, you know, water expansion. And I have just a couple of questions, and then maybe just a point I want to make. What drove the CBCL study in 2019? Where did that ever come from? Who council wanted to do it? What, whatever brought this up in the first place?
Staff. We knew that at some stage, this discussion was going to be had. And we wanted to have the resources available to have this discussion. Even council of the day back in 2018, there was no demand for, okay, we're going to have water. And I'm not saying there's demand here, but the discussions were starting. And we said, okay, we need to have the information available so council can make a strategic and informed decision. So that's what drove it primarily. It was a follow-up to our hydrogeological model that we had done, and the fact that we had received a couple of applications for people saying, oh, we need water, and how do we get water there? And so it was a question we had inside, Dwight and Chris Reason at the time, and Steve Cross now. But we said, okay, what's the information? What do we need to have? And so we got the CBCL to engage them to do the work.
Okay, cool. I see this as one of the most evolutionary things that can happen in our town in the next decade, maybe, let's say. And I can see a linkage between that study and where we are now. Because I think now, you had mentioned about, you know, you pointed out from that study, the astoundingly, you know, by our numbers here in this town, the total of a hundred and seventy-one million in 2019 dollars to build into legacy neighborhoods. And I don't believe that's the strategy that we should be considering when it comes to expanding our water system. Because to me, the real agitator here is the housing issue that we're facing. And the deficits that are not just, you know, might happen, but are likely and bound to happen. I mean, it almost exists now, but it's that whole six degrees of separation thing that over time, it's just going to grow and grow if not addressed. And I don't, I was not part of council in 2018, 2019, but I expect that the discussions around housing deficits was not really a matter of, it was pre-COVID, there was not really any of that discussion back then, you know. And so in my mind, the two things, and you really touched on it, one is housing, and the other, you mentioned about commercial development as a means of improving our tax base. And so to me, bearing in mind what Mr. Colburn has pointed out to us previously, and I believe you've mentioned it as well, that, you know, in terms of seeking federal partnership money, or even provincial for that matter, there's just no interest in giving us money on the basis of just infrastructure. And if we try to tie that to housing, well, then we need to be able to show that we're going to put water in, I know everybody understands this already, but we got to be able to show that we're going to put housing into areas, water into areas where housing developments can go up. So legacy neighborhoods are not those places. So I, to me, that's sort of like, is interesting, and it's insightful because of the costs and stuff. But I feel like my contention is that we probably almost just need to shove that to the side. Bearing in mind that where the tower is now and the lead line that comes down, and what we have is our first couple of steps here for the next two or three or four years, seem to be pretty decently thought out in the context of, you know, where it's got to go. I, when I look through the five-year capital utility expenditures, I note that there are basically five, you know, sections of water expansion that are built into that. And they don't really jive with these twelve phases from the CBCL. They're not meant to. I get that, you know. I do wonder about, I do wonder about expansion of the water system. Barrett, you know, the decisions that are made around where and when the water lines are expanded in the five-year plan. I'm not worried about the CBCL report at this point. I note, for example, that in 2029, that's when we see the water go to the other side of the arterial. It goes over to Monarch and Leisure and so on. And then there's a new water tower required there as well. These are lofty things. So does that mean that by virtue of this five-year plan, that we don't really imagine the water line getting over to the other side of the arterial until 29, according to that?
The benefit of the study, the way it's put together by CBCL is these are, and you're a hundred percent right, these can be, I would say, you know, Chinese menu type A, to pick A, B, whatever. It goes back to the strategic discussion of council. If council says, okay, we want to focus on getting water to undeveloped areas, then what we do from an engineering perspective is say, okay, well, we need to do this one and that one. And why would we put water into Sun Valley Park if we don't need, because it doesn't do anything?
Right.
The flip side of this becomes, all right, we need the people and we need the water in Sun Valley Park because it gives us four hundred users, and that's going to pay for the expansion someplace else.
Yeah, sure.
So it's a balancing of, are we generating users? Or are we, are we, as you point out, we just got to take from the well to the tower, from the tower to the major user, and whatever that corridor serves is, those are the users we live off of, so be it. And so, but, so what the CBCL report has said, okay, just to give you a feel for what it would cost you, this is, this is how it's, how you're laid out.
Right.
So you don't have to say, okay, this is, it's not because it's one, two, three, four, five, six. It doesn't have to go one, two, three, four, five, six.
Right.
We have the opportunity every once in a while that somebody will come to us and say, I'm selling my land. Do you want it? And we'll go, oh, wait, now is that where we think a well would be?
Yes.
Okay. Those types of decisions, definitely, you should be doing as soon as you can. Take advantage of those types of opportunities, because you never know when it's going to pop up again. But from a layout perspective, say, all right, we're going to put water down this particular street or whatever. If it doesn't serve a strategic purpose of council, why would you do it?
So if our strategy, if our strategy, for example, then, is, and again, I understand the CBCL report was when... report was when the context was a little different, the whole discussion around expanded water service. But if we accept, and I'm not saying we do accept this, but I'm just saying to, for us to consider this. If we accept the notion that our main driver here is to try to address the coming housing shortages and to cooperate with efforts being made to procure assistant assisted funding for building of new housing and whatnot, gentle densifying, as we've talked about and so on. If I imagine, just as a, I'll just use an actual example. If you go down on the other side of the arterial and you go down Hampton Road, past the Daily Store, past Counselor Thompson's house, down, 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 you get down to the overpass to turn right and go down Hampton Road. There's a field across the road there. I don't know who owns it, probably lots of people in here know who own it, whatever.
It was Crowley property.
But, you know, so I have no idea if that's an available property that could be ever looked at for this kind of development. What I'm saying is if we imagine a place like that, is a place where we think that's where would be, if we identify that as a good spot to put a sixty-unit building or something like that. This utility fund calendar doesn't imagine water going over to that side of the town for five more years. Played out here, and I'm just trying to understand.
But it does in my designated highway document that we provided to council last week. So, but that's that's exactly why we stuck to main corridors with the line. So you you you're you're exactly right. Your process thinking is is, and that's why it it would, you know, be wise for council to have a strategic opportunity to say, okay, is this our our approach? Then your engineering staff can go back and say, we've got all these plans, we can, now we streamline it to exactly that focus. And 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 there's nothing wrong with that, a hundred percent. And and that is a tool that now your staff can take and say, hey, we have direction. Somebody builds a subdivision off so-and-so. It's, if it's within a reasonable distance, and if we put a short trunk line, we can get a major development connected toward, great. But if if it's, you know, on the other side of the highway and there's no water and it's gonna cost us more than you're gonna generate, why would you do it?
Right.
Why, all the subdivisions have a hydrogeological analysis when they submit their subdivision plan to Dwight and his team. They show, do you have the capacity on your groundwater with X number of wells at certain depths to supply quality, quantity for for those developments? And that's part of their approval process, part of the things they have to provide for that red tape.
And I totally agree, if we pass by a a legacy neighborhood, let's say, on the way to what we imagine to be a sort of a final destination, let's call it, of a of a line going out, then absolutely, I agree, we should snake in there and hook up and and realize that revenue that can come from that. But anyway, I, the other, the last thing, I just thought, I wanted to make sure we were all thinking about that, because I think that's the driver that motivates us more than anything is the housing questions that we're facing. And I just wanted to say that I I am quite delighted, though, that the difference between, you know, sort of now and even last year is that we now have in front of us, it seems to me, a budget that is accounting for the beginning stages of expanding this system. Now, I understand it's on a big borrow, but nevertheless, it, we do have a budget that that takes that into account. And so I'm very happy about that. And I guess I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor, like, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Lozier. I have a few questions. I guess I'm just gonna, again, change my order so we can kinda keep, continue to to chat about the water. So in terms of the budget, you're looking at, you know, three point five million. But I'm confused with what exactly, only because I'm looking at the phases and stuff. So can you just explain to me? I mean, I totally agree. I I don't think that, you know, it's not feasible for us to start. I I mean, I'm, I care about housing and density and and maximizing that. And, you know, making sure that the infrastructure is in place to make it easy for people to come in and do that. I'm just not quite sure what this ask is about, because when I'm looking at the map, like, maybe it's small and there's different phases.
There is a difference on that map. It's a portion, it's a, it's a component of that other map.
Okay.
And what we've done is, to to Counselor Bigger's point, is extracted some of those legacy streets to say, okay, we we just, what is it gonna take us to get from point A to to the Hampton Road? Because we wanna make sure that this area of high-density development has the best quality, quantity of water. We don't need to go into Terra Wood and all these, we just wanna come into this area.
Right, because of the whole loop you talked about.
This is that's to that, this is the level that we're talking, just to get us here, that's on the one street and the other side street. If, and what that gives us is to build off of what what Counselor Bigger was saying, is if there's, you know, heaven forbid, some type of an environmental issue, somebody has a fuel tank, furnace oil tank that spills. Now we're in there, okay, we gotta, now we have the ability to service that area with the fuel.
So would this three point five million bring water down Cedar Ridge to Hampton Road? That's what you're asking? Okay, just because, yeah, like, it looks like it's phase two in this picture, but that's not the case. And and if that's the case, I guess, again, I hate, because I I I see it in other spots where we've said, oh, we don't have the money, and we've kind of, not cheap and dope, but we've just worked within our budget. And then we go back and go, oh, I wish we would have put a shoulder, I wish we would have done this, you know? So I guess that's my worry, because I love the idea of getting water to Hampton Road because there is a lot of opportunity. But then I also wanna do it right, in the sense that if we're gonna rip up the road and we're putting it through a major throughway, you know, do we invest the money to make sure that there is proper infrastructure for safe walking and active transportation and all that stuff while we're doing it all? And I'm guessing that that three point five doesn't cover all that.
That's, that was the other transportation capital and the paving, that's just straight paving of what is there now. To to Counselor Bigger's point, I believe it was, maybe a little bit of, you know, or or Counselor Miller's, it may be a little bit of ability to take those lanes and and make them a little, you know, define shoulders a little bit better. But to my point a little earlier, your your, an AT component for there would add another million dollars, one point two million dollars easily to your street capital costs. If council's prepared, I I won't say it, council's prepared to do that, this goes back to budgeting. But that's, and and again, I'm 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 just, my one point two is off my top of my head, I would wanna go through there. It goes back to what style are we putting in the whole bit? So it could be a one point five. Whatever.
Right. And I can't remember what the active transportation
Network, yep.
identified in terms of Cedar Ridge, in terms of what it would need. But I guess, you know, I'm leery about that because, you know, you know, I know we want water and we're trying to be budget-conscious, but we also don't want to be looking back kicking ourselves that we had a chance to do it right and we didn't. And then we're like, you know, now more, you know, again, we're, we're building density. So we're building more cars driving on those streets, and we still haven't addressed some of the safety concerns for our residents.
As I touched on a little bit this morning, I I really don't think that we're shooting ourselves in the foot by doing a paving alone, because because there is space there of that median, it would, we would have to invest that extra money anyway. So it's not like, oh, you're gonna dig up a road. No, we're digging up existing land to put in road, and then it's just, and then it's just paint. So we're not, we're not losing an opportunity by doing this. We're just not spending the money to take advantage of that particular opportunity. And, you know, sort of the build off of that is, if council of the future decides, you know, Cedar Ridge is gonna be our apartment corridor. And all the people who wanna sell all their houses can group together, and they sell three houses, and they'll put up an apartment. And now we have water, and we wanna put AT, now we have that ability to do that. That's what, what's, that's what water does on that particular street, because there's such a wide right-of-way. And it gives us the ability, if we wanna do that, you're changing zoning bylaws and things like that on other streets as well. But it goes back to, again, a strategic discussion of council. And I know we're sort of hedging off strategic discussion rather than specific budget discussion at this stage. Apologies.
Awesome, thank you. Another question we had was, a group of residents came to us a few months back that lived in Foresters Cove subdivision. And I looked, but I couldn't quite, I saw the need. Anyway, can you, can you, I guess, describe, because we kinda kicked it to budget planning, we said we'd address it here, and I'm just wondering what we've.
So so I've I've talked to the treasurer, and she's still doing her her review of the particular framework. But the way that the particular issue was presented was not accurate to council. Their presentation was that they are subsidizing the rest of the sewer users, which is not the case. Sewer users are subsidizing those individuals. There's not a good business case to change a surcharge model for those particular properties. There may be a case for changing the size of the surcharge for that particular property, because it's gonna cost every, for every building that's down there that has a in-house or outside pump. It, currently, it's about a ten thousand to twelve thousand dollar replacement cost. They signed agreement to make an ongoing contribution to the town to cover that replacement cost. Should the, should the agreement be restructured to say, once you hit X dollars, you don't no longer need the, or that particular property no longer needs to make a contribution? Or should it be, rather than a surcharge percentage, because if you percent increase your utility rate and a percent increase of your surcharge, you're getting a double hit? Should it just be a set charge? That's a discussion that the treasurer is currently looking at. But neither one of us are, would be recommended to council that we eliminate that particular surcharge, because it's serving a purpose for replacement of that.
And I, I think their concern wasn't that they were paying a surcharge, it was that they were also paying the sewer, like, for the pump station, like, that the rest of the community uses that they don't actually tie into.
They tie into treatment, whether it's, it's the same, it's the same process. It's all in the same same budget. Just because their flush goes to the Wildwood Lagoon with the with the wetland, it's the same process and and pumps and lines, as if somebody from here went down to Longwood Park. So really, it's just, how is it being treated at the end of that line? That's the only way that it's different. So they are, they are subject to the same costs and responsibilities and liabilities as any other sewer user. The only difference for them specifically is that they have a secondary way for the wastewater to get to this two-hour system. So so for us, it's a question of what is a fair and equitable way for those costs, long-term costs? Is it fair for, oh, we we get, it's like my driveway cover, is it fair for us to say, okay, you've got your pump? Oh, we'll 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 pay for it, replace it when it, when it has to be replaced, the town, everybody else is paying for it? No, you you put money a little bit away. Now it's a case of, when is that there? They only, they've got a set life, they're, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen years. So we're gonna be getting to that point, you know, closely. And most of those folks, if I remember correctly, are barely past the halfway value of replacing one of those pumps. We've replaced two already that we've had to eat the cost difference for those those particular pumps. So it's a fairness thing for not just the users, but the, and and we recognize that, yes, they have a certain point, but it's, but we would not, I I would not, and the treasurer wouldn't recommend eliminating the structure. It's maybe it's how it's configured, but not eliminating the structure as it sits. And that was, that was something that that she was gonna be looking at over the next little bit here for us.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate that, just because I know we had made a motion that we were bringing it to budget. So hopefully, we can express that or explain that to the residents, because I think they are waiting for kind of a.
Yep, I, the way I look at it, if if our former treasurer who lives in that street didn't object to it, I think that, I don't think it's a bad deal. If Mike Brennan comes here and he's painting it on the door, then, okay, I would look at it, but this is, this is, like, as savvy as they come. And if he doesn't have an issue with it, I don't really think anybody else should.
And just one other quick question around the Gondola Point bathroom.
Yes.
So is that something that we could hold off on, or is it because we're doing, like, if we're gonna do it, we have to do it now because of the upgrades to the pumping station? Like, is that something that would cost us more if we waited to see what Gondola Point actually is gonna look like?
No, it should be done as part of the, because it's, would be a structural addition to the building. We're doing the building design over the next couple of months, so we need to know, is is the foundation gonna be twenty feet or twenty-five feet or twenty-eight, whatever it is? And then you design your concrete and the whole bit. And what it does is it changes the configuration of the wet well underneath the building, but also, okay, now we have a electrical room. We can L-shaped it behind because we don't need to be, so now we might be able to save some space. We should know as soon as we can when it comes to this.
And I guess the reason I ask that is because you know, knowing that in the future, we potentially want bathrooms at the beach, which is a huge kind of node in terms of, you know, kind of congregation. And it's not that far from the pumping station. And we put it in the budget for the pumping station, but I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of looking at.
And and we recognizing that, this is not a fully functional, this is, I'm caught short, I gotta, I'm running and I I gotta go, or I'm walking, or I got a kid that has to have a diaper change, or whatever it is. It's it's basically, it's it's not glamorous, it's not mirrors, and the the person with the little pump that sprays, you have it. This is, okay, a room I can get into, a unit, multi-gender, secure. It's a convenience thing. It's like, I keep going back to walking Utrecht, and you've got the, next to the canal, you've got the little urinals that just go right to the canal, like, it's every hundred yards type of thing. But this is, this is a secure place. And it's easily managed because it's part of our system that we are there.
I guess I'm just thinking it would still cost potentially two hundred grand.
And 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 quite frankly, I I would be surprised if we if we hit that, even talk to the consultants. We all know how consultants like to say, and I would, I would think we would be significantly less than that for this particular, but we're only early in the design stages.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks again, Gary, for your information. Got a couple of questions. I'm looking, well, you know where I live anyway, above Ritchie Lake. And I've had water go past me on the Hampton Road. And I'm looking at Phase Nine, which is seven or eight or nine or ten years from now.
Or never.
And and it's very, it's very discouraging. That's a, that's a heavily populated subdivision in there with, I don't know, sixty or eighty houses that could easily accommodate water that's across the road from it right now. And and I guess I just plead my case that I I wanna get rid of my well, you know, I want, I want town water. And and I'll let you think about that comment for a second, but a few years ago, several years ago, I think our our CAO discussed the possibility of partnering with Rosé in adjacent, in adjacent development of their water system going up Donald and Drive. One side's got their water and the other side's got no water. And I was wondering, is that worth dusting off again and maybe looking at it, doing it in phases again, you know? But there's a source there and.
There is a source there, and again, that's another strategic decision. Does council want to be in involved with Rosé, a totally different source? Your your users would be subject to their rate structure, their supply, their maintenance, all that stuff that goes with it. It's not as simple as saying, well, we'll tie their pipe to our pipe. There's a whole chemistry, water chemistry and and issue that comes with that. But as far as servicing, we we have overlapping agreements now where some of their lots take our sewage, some of our our lots, some of our systems take their sewage or water, vice versa. So we have them on individual cases where, on the property lines where those things occur. But again, it's, it is a regional discussion. I'm sure, you know, and and the same thing with the wastewater treatment. If we took our lagoon where it's now, and we just pull the plug, it's all gravity down to a, we could have a significantly high-efficiency regional wastewater treatment, I shouldn't say that, but down in it, from an engineering perspective, there's nothing that says we shouldn't have a environmentally safe regional wastewater treatment at, say, at the current or someplace close in Rosé that would eliminate their spring freshet issues and our overflow or whatever. You could design it appropriately. But it goes back to a regional agreement. And and fortunately or otherwise, the communities were left as they were when it came to amalgamations. And if if this had been all one community, I doubt we would be having that type of conversation, because exactly that would be happening. Somebody needs water on Donald and Drive, oh, just take the system, off you go. We're two communities and we're two systems and we're managed differently. And that's the long and the short of it. It's, what stage does a regional approach?
But is it worth the, but if it's worth, is it worth dusting off and have fresh faces at the table and just look at the complexities of it and?
I think some of the people at table aren't gonna be that fresh. There's some some that are still hangers-oners from the day.
Yeah, but not for long.
On both sides. But but it it's always, it's always warrants a a a robust regional discussion for any level of service like that. Quite frankly, yes, you're a hundred percent right. And from an engineering perspective, there's no reason why, you you couldn't have those types of discussion. If you can work out the details and the niceties between the two communities, that's all it takes. Particularly if one community says, listen, we'll pay for this, all we need you to do is administer it, great. But you you're you're correct. The the design may be different, but it's now it's just a case of how is it administered, how is it managed? And whether communities are willing to take that type of a discussion. Because the same discussion, it was, what was it, forty million dollars to bring a water line from the airport, down Airport Arterial? From the city of St. John Water to the border here that both communities could take advantage of, which is an even bigger system of supply. But the communities went, no, no, we want our own.
I was at the meeting.
Yes, you were.
And.
You were one of the people saying, why aren't we looking at a regional system? I remember that.
Yeah, and they wanted to loop it in the arterial, out along the road, down the arterial, and then down to the racetrack, railway track to St. John. Loop it and then go either way, feed it either way. And I mean, that was, that was quite a few years ago.
It's ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three, if I think, if I'm not mistaken.
You know, it's a, it's something that.
Imagine, imagine if nineteen ninety-three, we had invested forty-five million dollars. We wouldn't be having this conversation now. And if you're forty-five million dollars in nineteen ninety-three dollars, is two hundred million dollars now?
Yeah, oh, yeah, easy. But I guess that, that the, I I think the opportunities are still there. They've just got to be addressed and maybe have a a serious discussion on just what is possible.
Council always agrees on everything between each other, police, fire, all that stuff, they're agree all the time. It's so it's just as easy.
So it's, I guess it's basically the staff's problem.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. We'll take it, we'll take it from here.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, moving now to Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, your worship, thank you, Gary, for all the information, it's a lot. So I guess, um, I sort of look at it and say, you know, what is our return on, on investment, right? Bad girl saying that, right?
No, right, you nail on the head.
You know, it's three point five, three million, five hundred. How many people are gonna hook up? How much water are we, how much revenue are we gonna generate? How many new buildings, you know, so I look at it and say, should we be going this way or should we be going that way where all the empty land is?
If Krista was here, she'd be, she'd have her hands in the air going, hallelujah, because our system is not, our user, current user base does not fully fund. Appropriately, this, the users doesn't fully fund the systems that we have now.
Right, so when I.
You can't, you can't run a deficit system all the time.
We're always in a deficit, so I just look at that three point five and that's just one loop. So we, as we continue, I mean, if we say we're gonna go with one loop, then we're pretty well committing that we're going. All in for water, like for the rest of the town.
Or to Counselor Baker's point about phase, strategic development, but it's gotta be offset, so that, to, to your point. We're going there for a strategic reason, we will know we'll get a high-density use and we'll collect some side users. But the bulk of it is gonna be at this destination, and that's gonna generate the reason why we go there, that's our return on investment.
So I, I guess my, in my mind, I'm thinking, if we're going to do, if we think collectively we should do this. Then the, uh, choice of hooking on and not hooking on becomes, there's no choice. Like, if we're going to go for water, we can't afford to have people opting out of the system, it's like a group health plan. Everybody's in the plan or they're not, right, because the, the cost, so, so many people bear the cost and the rest won't. But we can't do that, so just if we decide to go ahead, then it will be, uh, it's not an opt-in, it's. You cannot opt-out plan. So I'm just wondering about your, uh, what your thoughts on that, and is this the right loop to do first? Or should we go out the other way where all the empty land is?
This, this is the strategic first loop, this, this, this is the loop that you want to have to marry up with the accelerator, uh, option that we have there. To Mr. Colburn's point about, uh, the feds not, not funding infrastructure anymore, they're funding, uh, housing and ex. So now we wanna be able to say, okay, where, if, if somebody say to us, uh, at the, at the corner of, of the Crowley Land down there. Counselor Baker's idea, there is a multi-unit, then that, hey, that might be the way, but we're still gonna be faced with. We got a one-way loop down there that doesn't, and if there's no, every user at the end, we're gonna have stagnant water, no second levels, pros. So here, this is the most strategic option that gives us the best opportunity to succeed when the time comes, we have the Hampton Road. For a number of reasons, even the most basic principles, if we wanna pave the Hampton Road, we really don't wanna pave it and then dig it up and pave it again. We wanna put those stuff in the ground and now pave it, which is the, one of my, my basic tenants, I've been doing this job for thirty-seven years, is. I don't wanna dig up new pavement, and I have yet to dig up new pavement for, for, for a frivolous reason. Three, three point five million dollars on that, that particular loop, until you get higher-density development in there, you will not, you will not. That loop alone will not generate revenue to fund itself. It's the, what, what will fund it will be, once it gets to here, now you've got a safe, reliable quantity and quality of water that encourages this area to develop. And over time, if planning changes and you say, okay, well, all, partway up, uh, Clearwood Drive. All those houses that people are selling and they're, now they're gonna say, all right, we'll do together, we'll put in a nice mini units, that's where it will pay. But, um, uh, people living on Cedar Ridge Boulevard now who pay their hundred ninety-four bucks for their base rate and. However many cents on a cubic meter of water is not gonna give you your three point five million dollars.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Counselor Miller, please.
Your worship, if I could add?
Yes, 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 Lord. I knew she was a she.
Sorry, if I could just add to the, to the, uh, discussion here, um, so right now. We have two hundred and ninety-four water customers. If we were to take this three point five million and just say, what would it cost? What we currently have, it would be almost twelve thousand dollars per user, just to fund this one water. So, uh, again, just to reiterate the fact that it, it, it won't sup. With the number of users that we have, it won't be currently supported, so I just wanted to, to add that to the conversation.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you, Krista. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, thank you, Mr. Lozier. Three quick questions, one's a comment. I've heard about the five hundred thousand dollar bathroom, that could be two hundred thousand dollars. It's kind of in the middle of, I would say, no man's land, but it's not in the ideal situ, spot, so.
If you have to go, you gotta go.
If, if you gotta go, you gotta go, but there's, there's, yeah, go behind the, the, the thing. My, my question is, we're also talking about potentially putting something down around Godola Point Beach, I mean. I would say just keep this in the budget, but maybe have a discussion later to, whether we just say, okay, keep it, and then we get that. Five hundred thousand dollars set aside already for something that's closer to Godola Point Beach, because I'd rather see something closer that way than.
The, the thing to remember is that these are two separate budgets, there's a utility capital and Dana's would come out of the general capital.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's why we're trying to bring this, and, and again, to Counselor Lux's point. That's why we're trying to get this designed to as close to the value as we can, so that we know what would be accounted for in the utility capital. So we're, while we're trying to take, make sure that it's less than more, and, and that's, so that's the goal. But your, your point is well taken, it's, and again.